I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Shelburne School District School Board. I don't have any adjustments to the agenda. Does anybody have anything? No? I don't see any members of the audience, that's why I asked. You're presenting, correct, all of you? Okay. Alright, excellent. Yeah. Insert sarcasm here, sorry. So we'll move right on to the presentation, so we'll do the kneecap assessment first and then middle school program, does that work for you? Which do you want to do first?
Kneecap's good.
Kneecap's good.
Yep, they're actually blended quite nicely, so it'll feed right into the other.
Alright, so whatever needs to happen for John to leave as easily as possible, let's go that way.
Okay. Do you want me to do an intro now?
Me?
Yep, sure. Okay. So yeah, so we just wanted to follow on to what was presented by Molly Solwell in there, kind of bring it down to a local level. And so what we have, I'm just wanting to tie some things together and point out that, okay, so we create these academic outcomes, really they're all driven through our action plans, we'll be talking about it at retreat, so we're not going to focus in on those too much. But everything really is tied together because tonight we've got a presentation also about our instructional program at the middle school with the goal being that we're looking at these indicators of which kneecap is one of them. And hopefully through that, it drives our action plans, which then modifies our instruction, goes back to look at the indicators. That's just the cycle of learning that we're trying to create. So we're going to give you some updates there, and then we will slide, it seems like a natural to slide right into our six-eight program. So we'll do that. Okay. Take it from there.
Okay. So I mean, this is, um, this is an interesting slide, and you can see it's fairly flat when you look at our reading and math kneecap data over the last nine years. This is the history of our kneecap data at Shelburne Community School. There are some slight fluctuations. If you look at two thousand seven, the third year in, they sort of update the questions every three years. So there's a teeny little dip you can see in two thousand seven, and you'll notice another one in two thousand ten when they update the questions. And then again in thirteen. They, they sort of update every three years, and we, we think that the rigor is ratcheted up slightly each of those times when the questions are updated. And so what we think is our instructional practice has matched the slight increase in rigor of kneecap. And then our socio-economic status data is, is showing a nice trend in reading. Math is fairly flat, but there, there is some trending in, in reading in a positive direction.
I think when you see flat data represents essentially a year's growth by the student, by the student population. I think what sticks out a lot for me with this graph is our SES population has continued to increase each year. And I think it'll be, that's reflected in a couple later graphs, but we expect this number to continue to rise. And I think the building and the district as well has been really responsive to this incoming population. And what we're seeing is essentially sixty-three percent of this population is proficient, and that math population is right around that forty-five percent marker.
What?
This graph's a little different than the last two, and what it represents is our IEP population, alright? And it's from two thousand nine to two thousand thirteen, and how it's broken down is on the Y-axis, we have scaled scores. And you see the black line right at the forty mark, and that's what kneecap defines as proficient. A couple of key things stick out for me in this populate, with this population of learners, and that first point is that each year, this population continues to make a year's growth, alright? But what it also represents is as curricular expectations increase, we know that our intervention currently is not making, not accelerating that learning, what we talked about last, last month, not last week. And so we're going to be kind, the service delivery model that we're making, the changes in that delivery model, and kind of working around TIL and with Molly and Megan, we're being responsive in knowing that we do need to make some tweaks to our interventions. A second point that resonates with me is this data is not atypical for this population. It's across the state and across the country. And while it's kind of for us sitting around the room in the Shelburne community, it's, it's low. And it's, you know, it's, we look at it and we're kind of like, alright, we need to do better. For the state and for other buildings in the district, it's high, but that term's relative. And it's not high enough from my view and from, you know, John's view. But I also think, the third point is I think it speaks volumes to the direction that we're heading, with that fundamental commitment to intervention acceleration for all students through that high quality first instruction, data-driven intervention, co-teaching, and collaboration between, you know, it's not just special educators more, it's that classroom teacher, and some math coordinator, and it's a Gensa. And then for me, the, the point that really sticks out is we're not going to fix this overnight. You know, I think the country's been wrestling with this for a long time. How do we meet this group of learners' needs? And I think right now, the building and the district are heading in a real nice direction in knowing that we do need to make changes to meet this group of learners' their needs. And what it fundamentally comes down to is those classroom teachers and special educators need to believe that all students can achieve at a high level.
And just a little case in point, years, four years ago when I began my role as a math coordinator, I was basically told, okay, here, you're two interventionists. They work, they just work with tier-two kids. They do not work with students on IEPs. That's what special education is for. And I can tell you that today, that is not at all our philosophy. We don't, there are no lines between who we work with and who we don't. They have completely been blurred. And I work a lot with special educators and classroom teachers when planning and implementing lessons, and it's phenomenal.
Does the number of students on IEPs change from year to year?
It does, yeah.
Do they fluctuate a bit?
Yeah, it does fluctuate. We've seen, our population, we've seen an increase, but what's interesting is in about six graphs, you'll see we've decreased the population at the eighth grade level, which is telling in that where our interventions are working and they're moving to five oh fours. So whereas our eighth grade population of IEPs is really small, what you'll find is, whoa, those numbers, that's, when we see it, it's gonna be like, alright, wow, but we're moving kids. But it is fluctuating, and our numbers are increasing.
John, is that, is that data though tracked, longitudinally is the term?
Yeah.
To say that in third grade, this group of kids had X number of IEPs, and today in eighth grade, it's down.
Yeah.
And you're gonna see that. We've got one piece of data of our current eighth graders when we look at them.
Yeah.
So this next slide is ELL students. And you can see, maybe you can't, the, the first graph is nine-ten, and then pink is ten-eleven, and then eleven-twelve, and then up to, this year is red. And so you can see that we have a significant increase in the number of ELL students in our building.
And, and for the community, ELL is...
English language learners. These are students who speak, English is not their first language. And, and in comparison, across CSSU, two point nine percent is the growth rate of ELL students, and ours is clearly beyond that. Well beyond that, so.
So special ed is on to, you know, it, it's a supervisory union responsibility, and then the budgeting has changed from how it was in the past. Is ELL still strictly with the school district, or is that also?
ELL lives at the SU level, and schools are, are giving a bill to pay for their sharing.
I mean, it's essentially purchased services then at this point. Is that going to change the ADM like we just did with
I don't know.
with special ed for coming years, or?
That's a good question. I don't know. That would be a great thing for me to raise. We function just like everything lives at the SU because I move people around depending on need and those kinds of things which would tell you that it's SU-driven. Everything except the budgeting part. So, good question. So noted. So, you probably recall from the beginning of this year and the end of last year that we had written some, AY, had written a school improvement plan. And the school improvement plan was the result of being in our fourth year of corrective action. Our school improvement plan was developed by a team, as you know, and that included everyone from community members to teachers, everyone inputting the top three goals that we would be looking at to work on, and we have in fact this year. So family engagement, leadership, and then instruction. And family engagement is something that we're actually working on more starting next year. We've worked really hard to do, to restructure our governance, which is called Program Council. We call it our leadership team. And that group has worked to develop a schedule that really, we feel, helped improve student achievement, particularly through the availability of time to develop units of study for students that will help with that as well as intervention blocks. And the instructional part is our multi-tiered system of support, which I think Alan will talk about in just a minute, but that is to ensure that all students are achieving at those high levels that we want them to achieve at.
Yeah, so just that listing of specific steps we've taken, again, these are steps in response to the fact that we're under corrective action, which grows directly from our kneecap scores, which grows directly from, we've been identified that our students with disabilities and our students from low SES populations are not making,
En...
Right, they're not making that advanced growth that we're trying to accomplish. And it has become, as much as we can, kind of a laser focus of our school. But I also emphasize that in order to do something, we've been doing the same thing for a long time, and as you saw that first graph, we're maintaining, I think we say a lot, we're a good school. We do some things really well. What we're trying to target is that group, and how can we, how can we start impacting that gap, and that means we're going to do some things different. So just last school board meeting, you approved one of those changes, our shifting of how we're going to provide supports to those students, how we're going to shift from having specialists to more special educators, because that's what the research calls for us to do. Okay? We're right now rolling out, we're in the midst of rolling out a, a schedule next year that for some people looks fundamentally different than the schedule has for many years. And we've done that specifically to make sure that we have got what we're calling pillars, which are those things that we hold near and dear that we think are going to impact this specific group of students, which is a dedicated intervention time to each grade level, common planning time for teachers so that they can sit down with special educators as a group and plan instruction, and that there are extended blocks of time for teachers to have instructions, their day isn't broken into little blocks. If I'm totally transparent, the change is the impact on unified art schedules. It is fundamentally different for them. Many of them are now looking at being K-eight in terms of their scope, so that we can have those common planning times, those blocks of instruction. Okay? It has been a long process. It's not done, but it's something we think is really important and moves us forward. And we've made a commitment to bringing teachers together. We call them MC squared. Meetings of creative collaboration where teachers and special educators and anyone else who's providing intervention, sit down every week, talk about what's happening, talk about, well, Alan is struggling in this. Here's the data that shows it. What are we going to do for Alan that can move him forward? And then coming back again in a couple weeks and say, did that move Alan forward? Not waiting for the next kneecap test to identify and say, whoa, Alan's still having the same problems, but being responsive in time. That's what those meetings are about, and all these pieces tied together for that. We have professional development going in math, we have professional development going literacy, and making sure that tier-one instruction that we call it is of the highest quality. And at the CSSU level, we take part in TIL, which is our tiered instructional leadership team, which is defining the standards by which these systems are put together. What are our standards of practice? And we also participate in that tier-three team, which is kind of our special educators coming together and saying, how, how do we provide the best interventions? What should we be doing for these students? Because we've got a wealth of resources, but if something's happening better in one place, we want to be doing that. So that's all that MTSS that you heard us talk about last time in our presentation. Continue math best practice. We're doing tremendous work around Common Core. The S-PAC is coming. It's going to give us some new data, but we know there are, there is new knowledge of how this instruction should look. And that really ties into this with a refinement of curriculum and also staffing changes. It's why we came and asked for another special educator this year, and we approved that. It's why we've shifted maybe some thinking around our pairs and specialists. So hopefully it all ties together with what you saw there today. I mean, hopefully you're seeing the connections and not just, oh, they did this, and then this, and then this, and then this. I wonder what it all means. We feel like, you know, we are having that laser focus that even was talked about in Molly's presentation, that this is what good schools do. They look at it, they keep on it, they keep on it. So, that's kind of our kneecap, and we thought we'd even pause here because what will shift into a little bit is into eighth grade, or sixth, seventh, and eighth grade program. There's going to be more information obviously about kneecap and math, because, well, what a great way to find out how we're doing. Let's look at how our eighth graders are doing at the end of this process. But while that's up there, does anyone have any questions just about kneecap or what we talked about in the beginning there?
Can I just say one thing? The MC squared, that's probably one of the most significant changes that has been made around the way we meet around students since I've been teaching for the last eighteen years. And it just, in terms of doubling the time, we used to meet about thirty-five minutes in one of the open classrooms with people kind of coming and going. It's a dedicated hour now in Alan's office with the door shut, which helps a lot. An ongoing agenda, I mean, it's really changed the way that we talk about these kids and their needs, and it's been really helpful, so.
Much more focused on...
So the way this schedule's been reorganized, this is, I've heard it three different ways, first time from you. I appreciate that call. It used to be, this is my interpretation, and correct me if I'm wrong, you had UA, different blocks, and those were scheduled out, and then each classroom time was worked around those UA blocks, say. And that wasn't continuous learning. So now what you're looking for is bigger blocks of continuous learning in the classroom separate from UA, and then re- reorganizing UA schedules for each class, and thus changing the way UA teachers are allocated throughout the day, sort of. Is that correct?
And also there's an intervention block that needs to happen particularly for our first, second, and third grades, I would say. I mean, it's really K to five, but I really want to target that first, second, and third grade intervention where it is a dedicated half-hour day of intervention time.
Where you need to get all the first, all the second, all the third, say, together for that dedicated time.
For those different times, right? So everybody's involved in first grade, let's say from ten to ten-thirty. That's a dedicated intervention time every single day.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll kind of focus back and forth. We talked about it a little bit as far as literacy and mathematics and how we'll actually do that. But those are groups that are formed based on the data that we are presenting with. So some students, and I always like to give the example that your child might be sick for three weeks, and so they weren't able to master some skill that occurred while they were sick. So they might go into an intervention block because they were sick for three weeks of intervention, just because they didn't get that instruction.
Okay.
I think that answered your question. And so those UA shifts really are, it's kind of the opposite thought. We used to put lunch recess, ever since I ever did a schedule, it was lunch, recess, and UA were put into a schedule, and then teachers kind of put their stuff in there, and then the interventionists came and said, okay, I can plop myself here, and I can plop myself there. And data tells us that that's, that's not the way to do it.
That's exactly how I thought you were doing it, and that was, so that's good, okay.
So now we're looking at a much more, you know, focused structure as far as academics go. And we even, this year in the schedule, there is actually a split, so one grade won't have lunch and recess back to back. They'll have lunch, and then they'll have instruction, and then they'll have recess.
Okay.
The other way I found it really helpful for people to kind of understand, because there is a lot of conversation about this, is at, at six-eight, we've had the benefit of having multiple UA classes. I mean, one of our goals is as off as possible. We have Eric and Maggie and Robin on a team, and we want to have them not have students at the same time, so that they can sit down and meet on a regular basis. And we've been able to do that at middle school because we have world language, we have PE, we have art, we have music. We have enough of those UAs to create a schedule that works. K-five has been at a disadvantage because the way we've looked at it, like, let's say for instance, right now we have five kindergarten classes. That means I need five places to send kindergarteners to get them all available to have a conversation during the day. If I approach it and say, well, I've got a kindergarten art teacher, a kindergarten PE teacher, and a kindergarten music teacher, I'm out of luck. And that's how we've operated up until this year, because we've looked and said, oh, you're just a kindergarten music teacher. My other, our other music teacher is a three, four, five music teacher. So the big shift is looking and saying, wow, you're all K-six music teachers, so we're going to grab another music teacher to teach a kindergarten. We might grab another PE teacher to teach kindergarten. So you might see an Alan Myhand, who is typically thought of as a middle school PE teacher, with a kindergarten class on his schedule. That allows us to have all five kindergarten teachers and a special educator on a regular basis sitting down to those conversations about students in real time, because the only other time we've been able to do it has been faculty meetings. And those just, we're getting a lot of them accomplished there. That's not the most efficient use of a faculty meeting.
Okay, I understand.
So that's a big shift.
Yep.
So should we talk a little bit about the academic program?
So why are we switching back, we're, we're doing some kneecap and then some middle school, and then we're going back to kneecap? Is that what we're gonna do?
Kneecap will be embedded, there'll be a little more kneecap embedded in here just because it makes sense. Because what, the other thing we're talking about at all is what are the outcomes that demonstrate that we're having success with the middle school program that we're doing?
Okay.
Okay? So, alright. So, John, you ready?
Yeah, so there's quite a bit of information on this graph. The Y-axis, again, is scaled scores. The bottom, the X-axis is third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. This is our current eighth grade students longitudinally, longitudinally, okay, so over time. How they performed in third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. The top line, the blue line, is all students with the exception of IEP and five oh four students. Again, that black line is proficient. So what we see is those students have essentially performed quite a bit above proficiency, and they've continued to make a year's growth. So they're leaving SES, that cohort, which is essentially ninety-three percent of our population, with some strong mathematical thinking and really strong math foundational skills, and moving on to the high school. The green line, the students are eligible for a five oh four. And again, this population has continued to make some pretty strong growth over the, over their Shelburne career. The purple line is the SES, the SES cohort, alright? And over their career, we've noticed a dip. And I think, my thinking around, what I attribute that dip to is an increase in the number of students, alright? So we've had that population grow over the years, and just that population coming in with a lower set of skills. A lot of our SES population is also eligible for an IEP, alright? So we're, you essentially double dipped there, if that makes sense, alright? Additionally, I think what's important about that is we recognize where they are based on this year's kneecaps, and John, classroom teachers, and special educators are being responsive to that data and to local assessment data and providing interventions. The red line is students are eligible for an IEP. It's kind of that up and down trending line. That cohort for this year's eighth grade is quite small. It's, it's actually just a few students. So what you're seeing is a representation that is extremely small. So if one student performs poorly, clearly it's going to bring all the scores down. What's interesting is that cohort, we've had a lot of those students move from IEPs up to five oh fours. So interventions are working, but they're not working for all. So, as I said earlier, as curricular expectations get harder, these students don't have the base skills, so they're falling farther behind, alright? And that's what prompted our thinking, alright, we need to make changes. We need to be responsive to this. We need to be fluid in our approach. And we need to provide interventions that are built on kind of what Alan and Patty just spoke of, that MTSS model, collaboration, co-teaching. Not John and I not working together, but John and I working together. And again, these trends won't change overnight. It's going to be a long process. Our math data is better than the state data, which, you know, is, it is what it is, it is what it is, right? And nationally, the data is similar. But we recognize that this is a population that, you know, Molly and Megan are hyper-focused on, as is the building.
Is there data on, you know, you mentioned that kiddos that are on an IEP move up to a five oh four. Do we have data on whether or not those kids are leaving Shelburne Community School and going elsewhere? Is that a trend, or is that just, that not something?
No, our, this population isn't very, I can, I have one year of like kind of historical knowledge, and I think others can speak. This population isn't very transient.
Okay.
Alright, this population's staying in our building. We are, Shelburne is a desirable place to live, and we're getting a lot of families who want to move into this building. The Shelburne Community School is a wonderful building. We have a lot of families who want to move in. And I think the Shelburne community's welcoming them in, and within that, we're seeing an increase in that SES population, alright? And coupled to that is we're seeing an increase in our IP numbers go up, you know? I think being at Campbell Stunt last year, the word kind of on the street is not only is the district really good, but the building's really good, you know? So we do know that, we do, we have big gains to make, no different than any other school in the state, though, with this population. Our students are eligible for a five oh four and SES population, those are, those are strong scores, you know, especially over time. The five oh four group, it's, it's only a three-point increase, but we're moving those kids forward. And that's, it's nice to see. Because those students also, you know, the first question is for eligibility of a five oh four is, does a student have a disability? You know, they don't require that specialized instruction that a student on IEP requires, like gate three. So they do have a disability, however, they don't need specialized instruction, so that kind of third gate within special education.
As a middle school teacher, I see that rise between the sixth grade and the eighth grade year with that population of students. I mean, you know, it tends to dip a little bit when they come into middle school, and then the work that we've done with them, I'm encouraged by that number coming up by their eighth grade year.
I'm thinking about your students living in poverty and the growth of that number, and that parallels the growth of your ELL population. Many of whom are families living in poverty, so that, that's driving some of what's running on here.
And what I didn't want to do is disaggregate the GADA, data, excuse me, into break down SES and IEP because, you know, while we're eligible right now for the SES and IEP, a lot of those students within SES that are performing lower, it's, they have that IEP identification too. But our SES population who are not identified as having an IEP are doing quite strong. But the numbers are so small, didn't disaggregate it.
So I'm putting this slide up here one more time. You see, this is the third time you've seen it. These are the same practice standards that the K-twos, I showed you this at the K-two, at the three, five, and now at the six, eight, because they are the exact same practice standards that the Common Core highlights as, these are what mathematicians, these are the habits that mathematicians have. This is what they do. They persevere in solving problems. They make sense of them. They model with mathematics. They use appropriate tools. They look for and make use of structure. All these things are what we're expecting kindergartners, eighth graders, high schoolers to do. It may look and sound a little different in those rooms, of course, but it's, in essence, these habits are, what the research tells us are what mathematicians do. So again, we're, not to beat a dead horse here, but you know that we are trying our best to explicitly teach the good habits that we know if people adopt, they become mathematicians. They don't, they no longer struggle to gain concepts because they are mathematicians now. So if we can get kids to engage in these lifelong habits through the work we're doing in our classrooms and specifically explicitly teaching them, then the kneecap scores, yeah, the, the S-PAC scores, they, they may reflect this in time. But if we get kids that like mathematics as a result of what we're doing and are engaged in it and want to pursue it in high school when they come here, then I'm not sure I care what kneecap data says, as long as we... I'm not sure I care what kneecap data says, as long as we, I know, but the truth is that if we get, if we build mathematicians, then I feel like we've done our job.
Yeah.
And these may or may not show up in kneecap data, I don't know that they would right away, but... And we're doing this through the professional development that we've been engaged in for three years now, and you can see the posters, again, it's the same room that we were in last time, in the high school now. The high school has adopted the math best practice routines, and they're excited about it, and so am I, to see that the work continues.
And I think, and what John was saying is, it doesn't necessarily show up in kneecaps, because it speaks to the cognitive soft skills that, you know, are so important post-high school right now. And it speaks to the work that Tony Wagner, I think you and Megan and Elaine went to speak to, about, you know, the ability to persevere and collaborate with your peers. It just, that's what employees are kind of looking for right now.
If the kneecap doesn't work as a, as a metric, what metric can you use to, to assess whether you are inculcating this, these reasoning skills?
Great question, Bob, and I think Sback is explicit about assessing these. They have these eight practice standards embedded within, as a matter of fact, I think you're gonna see that. No, you're not. It's not in here, but in some of the rubrics on the Sback sample items that I've seen, they do say that this, this item specifically addresses tending to precision, or in the language that kids use, that kind of thing. So, and I'm not positive, because I haven't seen the actual assessment, but the release items do tend to line up with that. And as a matter of fact, the Bridges program, we adopted the two point O, the Common Core version. The CMP program that I'm gonna talk about here in a minute, they do have explicitly these standards highlighted in. This lesson really is one that addresses this one. MP dot three, makes sense of, and perseveres in solving problems. So, so we are, I don't know that Sback will do it, I think it will, but I'd like to see it, you know what I mean?
I think that we, I'd be surprised, but it's all yet to be shown to us, if we're gonna get a score related to these things. But I know inherent in the way questions are gonna be asked on Sback, some of these, a student will either apply and be able to accomplish because they have these skills, or won't be able to. And so, I, again, I don't know that these are so much there for us to score, although classroom teachers keep track of it on an Sback, but you have to have these skills in order to persevere through these very rigorous problems. Fewer multiple choice and more like, how do you solve this?
But also the, the thing from your presentation where folks who complete Algebra One in eighth grade, and the percentage of folks that do two advanced placement classes in their next four years of high school, because they did that, that's a great indicator. And if you cultivate this and get more kids into Algebra One, that's more folks that are enthralled with math.
Then you will have succeeded.
Yeah.
That's how you'll know whether you've succeeded.
That's a nice, that, so there's one possible metric.
Yep.
Yeah.
Anecdotally, watching a group of sixth graders take that math kneecap, as opposed to a group of eighth graders taking that math kneecap, a lot more time on task, a lot more time with them, like thinking through drawing, modeling, I mean, it's clear with the time that they're taking on that eighth grade test, that they've learned a lot of this, and they're applying it. Which, it didn't record it out.
So these, again, are, this is how we're getting at those math practice standards, is this professional development work we've done, and the constant engagement in, in these habits of mind, and habits of interaction, and it's stunning to me when you're in a kindergarten classroom, and one kid looks to the other and says, hold on, I'm not ready to talk yet, I need a little more private reasoning time. And they go back into, they put themselves in it to think, they need time to critically persevere and think, I mean, it's pretty, pretty cool. So this is a progression, you've seen this, it's been tweaked slightly. And you can see, our CMP three is an Algebra One program, and you can see the progression. In sixth grade, they get one class in red, or, sorry, this is a book, it's a unit, Variables and Patterns, isn't, is an algebra topic. And then in seventh grade, they have a couple, accentuate the negative, dealing with integers, and then moving straight ahead, of course, linear algebra. And then in eighth grade, you can see, it's pretty much algebra, that every topic is. And something that, that we've done, do we have time, Alan, to click on that document? Middle school teachers have been at, have been busy working at, building what they call teaching sequences for each of the books in CMP. So we have a program, that is our math program, right? It's canned, it comes in a package, and we're supposed to read the script and deliver it exactly like that. Well, we don't do that. We have taken it and broken it down, with collaborating with special educators, with teams of teachers, with me and, and others, to build these sequences that now every eighth grade kid gets this sequence. And it's powerful in that it helps us differentiate for every kid in the class. And it ensures that we are teaching the habits of mind and interaction, along with meeting the needs of every kid in that class. And the fact that we've built these internally means, now we've got a curriculum. So there's a slight semantical difference there, it's subtle, but a program is what you buy out of a box. A curriculum is what teachers have designed. And this is a curriculum that's been designed based on the CMP three program, which is, this is exciting work. And it's, it's yielded some really nice results, I think. And there's the nice results. The number of students going to CBU, attending either, anything higher than Algebra One. So that's basically the number of students completing Algebra One at Shelburne Community School, over five years. So, we're gonna play a little game, go ahead.
Is there any limit on the number of kids that can take Algebra One?
No, and the beautiful thing about our program now, and I couldn't be more proud of what we have to offer, is that every kid gets Algebra One. But there's no pressure to succeed, it's based on their readiness, their interest level. How engaged are they in those habits of mind and interaction that help relieve the anxiety associated with getting there, so to speak? But we no longer have seminars in the cafeteria, we've sort of abolished that practice. We, Algebra One is taught in every classroom, all the four classrooms deliver it, and kids, the expectations might be different. So if we've got kids that are struggling mathematically, and we're trying to meet their needs and support them in their learning, then we're certainly not pressuring them to pass Algebra One and pass the CBU final exam. But I can tell you, at the end of this year, they're gonna get a review packet that looks identical to every other kid in eighth grade, and there'll be different expectations on what they complete in that review packet.
Got it.
They will get a test that looks identical to the CBU final, except some of the questions, the Algebra One specific questions, will be moved to the back two or three pages. So every kid gets the same looking test, they sit down in a room together, they take it, it's the eighth grade final. It's also CBU's final for Algebra One. So it's open to all, and all are getting it at different levels. And I think that that's promoted some success, where it maybe wouldn't have been predicted in the past.
Okay.
Whereas we used to handpick students for this program, everyone's getting it now.
Cool.
There's also, anecdotal stuff.
Please do.
Every year, there's some of those eighth graders who are kind of bubbled, they're eighty percent on that Algebra One final. And, you know, we've had multiple conversations with parents and the student. You could take Algebra Two, but you're gonna have to work really hard next year. Or you could retake Algebra One, a lot of people do it and find success in life and high school. And so students will take Algebra One, even though technically they could have made it into Algebra Two. It was just they made that decision to.
So, we played this, this game at the, someone's starship beaming them up?
It's Mystery Science Theater pre-tension, that's what it is.
James Kirk was out there. So, here's a problem, let's play a little game of guess a grade level, and I'll narrow it down for you. It's either sixth, seventh, or eighth grade, what do you think? So you look at the expression, and which of them are equivalent to four X plus three Y over eight? You have to decide yes or no on each of those. No.
No.
What are equal to, X plus three Y over two, sorry about that. I can't see a darn thing. So just, at what grade level would you expect students to be doing this?
I would say six.
Anyone else wanna throw one out? You checking them all out, right, right, right.
Would you like to take, would you like to take the test?
So it's a seventh grade problem, and it's actually the high end of what seventh graders would be expected to know. It's, as you can see, this is like the scoring rubric right off of the Sback website.
I feel better now.
Okay, so here's another one, and this is, he's filling bags with sand, all the bags of sand are the same size. Each bag must weigh less than fifty pounds, one weighs fifty-seven, one weighs forty-one. Explain whether Jamal can pour sand from one bag into the other, so that the weight of each bag is less than fifty pounds. This is a sixth grade level task. And, but what I wanted to point out is that...
Where is it?
Students provide sufficient support for the conclusion that it's possible. That's the piece that, in the past, we hadn't been asked to do, and that we are, just, it's become a habit of teachers to not let anyone off the hook without justifying what they're thinking. Oh, you think that's the answer? All right, well, I need to know why and how, let's hear it. Access to the websites if you're interested.
And you're gonna continue?
Yeah, I'm gonna be gentsa right now. John's gonna talk about the longitudinal reading data, and then I'll do my best to fill it up.
Similar to the math, here is our current eighth grade population and their reading data over their Shelburne career while taking kneecaps, so third to eighth grade. I think the data speaks, for me, the data speaks strong to the early literacy program at Shelburne. Whereas, the early grades provide students with the basic skills they need to continue, and as we progress through the reading curriculum, we're asking students to analyze and infer within more complicated texts. All cohorts have an upward trending data on this particular reading assessment. Again, our population of learners are eligible for an IEP. Again, will continue to make upward growth, we recognize that it's not enough. Again, this is why we're making those fundamental changes to our service delivery model, built on the foundation of MTSS, co-teaching, collaboration, and that high-quality first instruction that is responsive and fluid to an array of learners. The reading data is similar to, across the state and across the other buildings in our district, in that a lot of our reading data is upward trending through their, through their years, for all cohorts. So, and I, the SCS population, that's, that's real strong growth, and it's really nice to see. The kneecap people, a growth of five points is what's considered significant growth, in their minds. So, a thirty-four up to a forty-seven during their school career, is some very strong growth.
So, Jen's is not feeling well, so I'm gonna be going over her slides with you. And this is a, an interesting, I want you to think back to your career in school, and think about when you would have seen something like this. You'd be given a passage or a book to read under the persimmon, and then given this prompt and asked to write and justify. I mean, I don't know that I ever had it, maybe in college?
College, fourth grade, is this?
This is seventh grade. This is a seventh grade response to texts. And this is our DRP data, which is the degrees of reading power. It's a screening tool that we use across the district and locally. And it helps us identify students that need support with reading. And you can see the green sliver is five point four percent, and those are the kids that are below proficient, that we're gonna target, we're gonna do more frequent check-ins and assessments on, and we're gonna give them the support they need to hopefully be successful leaders over time.
So just one thing, John has to leave, but we are gonna do resignations and retirements. And I know that, I think I said this with these guys, that you're leaving, we congratulate you on your appointment.
Thank you.
And thank you very much for your service, it's been a great year.
Thank you. Great work for you guys. It'll be good. I think there's a Spencer Grant, and I think I'm gonna get to work with Alan and Patty next year as a researcher in the building. All, actually, all around MT, I'm gonna do a doctorate in MTSS, which is kind of, kind of odd. But it'll be cool, it'll be some good work, and I'm excited that both Patty and Alan are open to have me back in the building, and Molly, and Elaine and Megan have been really open to the idea. I think you guys are already with it.
Dropped his file on the table, we need to look at it.
At UVM, they got a, for some, they offered me a fellowship. I tricked them, so, fooled them pretty good. So, but, it's been great working with you guys, and it's been an awesome year for me, so. And these guys are great, and these guys are great too.
That is a major water bottle.
It is. I'm gonna go Camel's Hump right now for...
Be safe.
Just gonna go rescue somebody.
For a broken leg.
Oh my goodness.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Eric, you wanna talk about this, or me too? Didn't write, Jen's wasn't gonna be here, so I'm gonna jump into this. So, I can talk about it if you'd like.
What'd you start, you know?
Absolutely, so, a team of middle school teachers have been working with an outside consultant, Bill Rich, who's worked within our building for a number of years. He coached all of us on differentiated instruction and taught classes on it, has developed with this team of teachers the expectations for student learning, which is actually, I remember back when he taught me my first class on differentiated instruction, that you target what you want students to get out of the instruction, and those are the, basically, the expectations for student learning. I mean, it's how you develop what you want kids to walk away with. And the middle school teachers are working on this for ELA, and social studies too?
Well, it actually will cut across all curricular areas. And it does draw kind of from the curriculum that John was talking about with math, that whole critical thinking thing. So, trying to, to put those habits of mind across the curriculum. It was a good year for me to get involved in this, because my daughter Shay has, has entered high school. She was in ninth grade this year, and I was getting her progress reports coming home. And CBU has done a tremendous amount with the Common Core and reporting out Common Core. And the reports look different in that they target specific things. And so, the geometry that she brings home, they'll talk about a specific skill in geometry, and whether that has been mastered or not. And it sometimes runs a page and a half, two pages, with these specific skills. So thinking about the way students are going to be assessed when they enter high school, and we kind of took the step back and said, so how can we align that with the middle school? And this is where we looked at, across the curriculum area, what you want an eighth grader leaving Shelburne Community School to be able to do. And the visual, for me, and I'm dating myself a little bit, is that there was the preppy handbook, where they had a picture of a preppy kid with different arrows saying, what made that kid preppy? We sort of envisioned, what is an eighth grade student leaving? What arrows would you have, and what skills would you want that eighth grade student to have as they're leaving middle school? And so, I'm gonna talk about social studies in a minute, and how it would apply to this. But basically, what we did is, we looked at that three column, which would be proficient, and said, what do we want a student to be able to do in reading, writing, speaking, critical thinking, listening? And then moved it both ways in terms of, this would, a four would be above the standard, and then a one and two would be working towards that standard. Because this is an eighth grader, you would think that the sixth graders coming in would fall to a one or a two. And so it's a different way of students thinking about this, that, you know, they've always gotten a hundred percent. So having to think about this as a spectrum that they're gonna achieve over the course of three years.
Kind of the relevance, the reason we're wanting to share as part of our middle school program is, a lot of times with a presentation like that, you might be expecting to hear about, what's our language arts curriculum? And we really wanna talk and communicate, what are our, what are our eighth grade outcomes in language arts? What do we want our students to be able to read, and how are we gonna identify whether they can do that or not? And we'll look at the three teams and say, we don't really care how you get there. It's not so much about the pathways, it's about where you end up, and then reporting out on that. And, so you're gonna be hearing a lot about this over there, we're just beginning this work. But it is in all likelihood gonna change the way we report, the way we talk about curriculum that's gonna be communicated with parents, because I think there has been some confusion over the years about, well, how come these teams are so different? What do they have in common? Well, what they have in common will be this stuff here. And we'll publish it, we'll link to it, we'll report out it and say, yeah, every eighth grader coming through, and it links right to CBU. and it links right to CDU with the skills they need at CDU. So it's at least two years of work that we've begun and we're on our way. We can't say it's anywhere near finished right now, but this website is kind of our beginning thinking around the work. And it crosses all curricular areas.
It's also language that we can use with the students. And so while I was in the process of developing this with the other middle school teachers, I was actually putting this up in front of the seventh and eighth graders saying, so this is what we're looking at. And we had an early version of this borrowed from one of the New York State schools and I kind of put it up for the eighth graders to look at. And one specific learning target that that district had was can read silently for sustained concentration for thirty minutes. And the eighth graders were like, we can do that. And I was like, I gotta be honest with you. I haven't seen a lot of you do that in a long time. And they were like, oh yeah, I watched this. Just today, I had one of the students say, so I finished that book. And so that clear learning target for a student, like, oh, okay. So the other way to think of it is like we're, the eighth grade right now are looking, are doing a research project, kind of an exit task on America in Transition where they have come up with their research topic, researched traditional paper, and then they're gonna be teaching it over the next two weeks to their classmates. At the beginning of that, we looked at these learning targets and said, no matter what subject you decide to research for this exit task, let's keep in mind, these are the actual skills that we're looking at. And so it's been really helpful in terms of having that dialogue with students.
I think we can skip over this.
That's what I was wondering.
Yep, I think so. If you wanna go S-Back, we can take you to that test anytime.
So this is kind of a concrete example of this. Last February when I came in, we reported on social studies. And I wasn't gonna put this on the slide and then I saw Robin and some of John's slides and realized that I needed more.
Competition.
When I presented, well, first off, the overarching goals. And we looked at these while we were writing these learning targets that I just showed you. And so this idea that over the course of three years, no matter what social studies projects the students are working on, they've provided multiple opportunities for students to think critically and make sense of complex social issues and historical issues. The thing that's come up a lot this year with both, with sixth, seventh, and eighth grade example of this has been what's happening in the Ukraine. Incredibly complex, concrete thinkers coming into abstract thinkers and how do you discuss that? And how do you talk about that? And, you know, the sixth graders are like, well, let's just send in the army, you know? Let's put a nuclear bomb there, you know? And so kind of working through that really complex issue. And then the second one, and I kind of, I had to go to the other social studies teacher, David Southworth, and say, now, what did exactly we mean by this? But continuity change, inquiry, and technology are cross-cutting themes, tools, and habits that enhance student understanding of the five big concepts and essential questions. So the continuity and change have to do with what social studies looks like in terms of there are certain continuity things that happen in history such as America, you know, all people are created equal. So that idea is a constant idea and how has it been sort of achieved or not achieved as you move through our history? Change is that idea that there are gonna be things that are going to change. And so thinking about that and how have those changes affected our history? And then the other two have to do with that inquiry and the technology that students use as tools getting there. The technology thing that I've been using most recently is a thing called Edmodo. And just really quickly, as you know, next spring, the kneecap is gonna change to an online testing platform. And so we've been looking for a way to get students to be able to write online and think about what does quality writing look like when you're simply writing into a box online? And Edmodo's helped me to be able to do that. And so I can actually link a video to Edmodo, show the video in class, and then allow the students to get onto the computer and watch that video as many times as they need to, stopping it, thinking about it, taking notes, and then clicking a turn-in button and it produces a box and they can then construct their answer into that box. So I've been using that a lot to individualize this instruction. I was out last week. I put a sub-plan in where students were asked to identify a page number, give the example from that page number, and then analyze the example. And middle afternoon, I opened up the first kid's response and he had written page forty-nine. So I was like, okay, so if he's taking this test online, page forty-nine isn't gonna fly. And we actually had to go in the next day and do some really direct instruction on what does this look like? And what did you need to supply? But so that's just one example of the technology that we're using. So the next shows the five big concepts. And this is what you're looking at on the handout. And so the conflict and change, the civic and social responsibilities, geography, culture, and economics. Those are the five areas that last year, all four teams came together with at least one representative and said, we can look at these as the guiding principles as we put together our curriculum on all of our teams. And so this document that you've got in your hands right now has been used each time teams have started to design or write curriculum. Or in some of the cases where I'm returning to a curriculum to look at it and say, do I need to change this in any way to meet the spirit of this document? So the next slide, I just did a quick survey of teachers and a survey of websites to see what teams have done across the school to address these five big ideas. Conflict and change, wars throughout history. All the teams have done something with wars in terms of why they happened, you know, scarce resources. One of the essential questions that one of the teams had was can war ever be humane? So thinking through that idea of conflict and change. Civil war through Vermont, through a Vermont soldier's eyes, looking at the civil war through a single person's eyes. All teams do something with cultures in terms of what do cultures look like? What basic human needs are being achieved as a result of those cultures? And how are they influenced by religion and economics maps and flag? Have you done that recently? American and French revolutions. Revolution is a concept that can be seen in all four teams. Two or three of the teams are actually combining the American and the French revolutions together. I actually saw a sophomore in the grocery store this weekend who ran up to me and said, you wouldn't believe it, we're doing the French Revolution and I know what they're talking about. So that prior knowledge that she got in my classroom allowed her to really access that high school level curriculum. So then civil rights and the anti-apartheid movements, westward expansion and manifest destiny. And then American in Transition, the progressive era is the one that I was actually just talking about that we're doing now. What that looks like in the classroom, and I've been excited, is while they were writing the research papers, one of the things that they've been doing throughout primary grades and middle school is a thing called a painted essay where the evidence is one color and then their analysis is another color. Really encouraged to look around the library as they've been writing these research papers. And I can see and they can point out the red quote that they're using as their example and then their analysis. And they're, it's just a habit that they now, this is the way they do it. They quote and then they analyze. So I've been very encouraged by that. So again, basically, the ideas that were in those, that guiding principle for the social studies curriculum sort of drove us or drove me when we were thinking about the learning targets for all students. And then this is what it kind of looks like on the ground.
And there's science, all of them. So this first slide, I think you've seen before probably, is part of the SES curriculum, which is the K-8, but this is just the middle school piece. And the columns are represented six, seven, and eight. And while we follow this, we don't necessarily follow it, this is exactly what everybody in sixth grade is going to get. We more look at it as by the end of eighth grade, they will have had units, learnings, experiences in all of these areas. Kind of wanted to put you a little bit inside, so how do we get from that document that says, okay, so we're gonna be learning physical science, we're gonna be learning life science, to what we as teachers look towards for, well, what should kids be learning about? So this is an example of a standard from the grade expectations that we've been using for a while, over a decade. And this is just for specific physical science grade expectations. So the enduring knowledge is at top, so you would look at that and say, well, that's kind of the big idea of what a student learning would be kind of heading towards. But then with more specificity, this is a seventh and eighth grade standard. And so we would look for, on the left, we would look at, okay, so what are students going to need to be able to do or show, demonstrate? And for one of these, it will be, well, they need to apply their understanding to actually designing an investigation, which would be a pretty advanced level piece to do. So not only do they have to understand the concept, but then be able to apply it in a meaningful way. And then the one below is maybe a easier level or a less deep level where they need to understand acceleration, but to the extent of being able to describe it and explain it. So for that level, that's as far as they would need to be able to demonstrate. Could they go further than that? Absolutely. And be exposed to designing an investigation involving acceleration? Absolutely. But they aren't going to be assessed on that. To the right would be the concepts that we would need to make sure are incorporated into the learning. So that kind of gives us a framework to do our lesson planning, our unit planning. And then what's really helpful is looking at what five, six is and then also looking at what the ninth grade standards are so that I can kind of create that box of where the seven, eight is. So we don't go too far with them because they might not be ready. Brain development and also making sure that we're not aiming too low. So this is what we use as our guide for designing our units. As you also have heard over the last few years, we do have an emphasis in best practice in science, which is around inquiry and inquiry in the other subjects also. And this is kind of a neat dual quote where the top is about what scientists, how scientists experience inquiry and that we're also asking our students to experience that also. The idea is that we are developing literate young scientists and scientists, young scientists that can also do the work of science, which is much different than, you know, it was almost like the treat that you got in science class before when I was in school. It was like, yay, we get to do a lab, whereas now it's woven into what we do. That's just part of what scientists do. How can you do science without it being an experience? So it's kind of a shift in how we're approaching. So inquiry is a theme that goes across all of the unit, all of the content. And as much exposure as possible to the practice of science. This also is kind of a neat flow diagram. And particularly when we jump next year into Next Gen, this will be useful for us to look at. And this is looking at the flow of inquiry. And you could start at any point. Sometimes we might start with that hook, that engagement. I might put a few materials in front of students and say, see what happens if you put that object in the water. Record some notes in your notebook. And that would be kind of exploring and a little bit of engagement in there. You might approach a question to them that will kind of get them thinking about it. Moving into the exploration and explaining, that's where you might call on their prior knowledge, but then also move into, well, what's the new learning that we're trying to achieve here? Because if you've experienced something and you've seen something happen through engagement and exploration, our next task, of course, is to say, oh, good job, you figured out that a sponge will float. Well, now we need to get into the concepts. And again, look at the GEs and make sure that we're hitting the right ones. Elaborate would be where we're looking at being able to explain and look at some of the justification that John talked about in math. And also looking at Common Core, a lot of work with using evidence and recording understanding of evidence. And that's been kind of a struggle to get our kids to do. They'd like to give the one-word answers, but we really need to be and are pushing them to elaborate and bring in the evidence and their understanding. And that's, can be an uphill struggle. And it is a struggle that we continue to work with. And then the evaluation is basically assessing students. Also having them be part of that assessment, I think it's important to create learners that are able to self-reflect and be able to kind of say, well, you know, this is where I land here. And I think, you know, as Eric said, sharing those standards with the students. It used to be a mystery, like, maybe I'll get an A this time because my teacher will like it. I wonder if they will. And now it's, okay, here's the standard. And oftentimes, kids can see where they land. They can see, well, I really didn't put much evidence in there. I guess I am kind of below proficient in this. So being much more transparent, use the buzzword, with the learning and with what, where we're trying to bring them along with a lot of their effort and their self-reflection. So with assessment, best assessment is part of the learning process. It's seamless. It can happen all the time at any point. Some of it is observational. Some of it is, happens at the beginning of a lesson or a unit, in the middle, at the beginning of the day, at the end of a class. All the time. Summitive would be more of that conclusive, okay, the end of this, what did you, what did you learn? What are you able to do? What can you show me? And then sometimes it's individual, sometimes it's group, and sometimes it's a combination. And teasing that out and teasing when it's appropriate to be individual, when it's appropriate to be group or combination. And then below that is just some examples. And there's so many different ways to assess. You know, kids coming in at the beginning of class and what they know when they leave. We, I've been amazed at how many teachers are now keeping, having students keep notebooks, which is their collection of learning for the year. I've just moved into our second notebooks of the year because we're just using them so much. Projects, a lot of written analysis, data analysis, presentations, quizzes, tests. And then the performance tasks, which are the district assessments that we've been giving our students. And then, of course, the kneecap also as part of the performance tasks.
So that wraps up our journey. This started, what, nine months ago? I think we first had Kay come in and talk about our academic program. And that draws a conclusion that you're grateful for. Hopefully that's been a good journey to show you. I hope it was kind of initiating that when we put that on the work plan that it would be you can feel more educated about what happens in our classrooms, in our school, in various areas. So I know it's stretched out a bit tonight, but we'll take any questions while we're here.
I'm just really excited for Russ's sake that it ended on science and math and not banking. Speaking as the engineer.
That's impressive.
Yeah, congratulations. It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of fun too. I mean, I have to say, like, it's the trends that were, it's a lot of work, but it's really exciting. It feels like right where education should be. Like, why was it so secretive before? And now it's just so, like, here's where we're going, kids. Together, we're going there. And it's really exciting. And the excitement level that our students experience and involvement, it's just, that's the most gratifying part, I think, is when they come in and they're like, what are we gonna do today? You know, because it's something new. And they're part of that process. They're part of, what are we going to do today also? Where's their learning gonna take us? Good trends.
I know if you heard me say when we were coming in, I knew it was all kind of being internalized by students when my daughter Shay came home and said, ah, I gotta get started. I've got a summative assessment tomorrow that I've gotta study for. I'm like, wow, so, you know, she's internalized that language enough that that's the way it's...
Do you find that computers and laptops and, you know, technology is enriching the experience of the eighth graders in this curriculum?
I think so. I really do. And part of what drives my thinking in that area is that, you know, middle schoolers, adolescents are online using those tools in their own life. And I think we need to bring education into that life as much as possible. And so, you know, I mentioned that Edmodo thing. When students first brought F up Edmodo, I'd never been on Facebook and they all brought it up. And they're like, oh, it looks just like Facebook. And they got started. And so being able to use those things that they're familiar with and then apply them to education. And then also, we talk a lot about, you know, the communication you do in a text message is gonna be far different than the communication that you're gonna need to do in school, the workplace. And it's really important that you're modifying the way you're communicating, even though it's online, that this is... that this is education, this is social, so.
Foreign language.
Yeah.
Also, our access to information is really phenomenal. Just, you know, one of the areas that we're working on is data analysis. And, you know, kids can collect their own data, which is great. But we also have this incredible, almost too much, this incredible wealth of information to be able to go look at historic records. So we were talking about climate change earlier. Look at historic record of climate. Have the kids collect data from online resources. NOAA is a great resource. Have them run their own graphs, or look at graphs that scientists have presented. Having regular ability to access that through laptops that are right on the wing. So if a student has a question, say, well, let's look that up, let's see where if we can find some data. And then I think also, just not being afraid of using, like, there's so much out there, and there's so much that isn't healthy for kids to be exposed to. But just teaching them, you know, what is the appropriate use? And what is true and what is not true as you are looking for information? And, you know, teaching kids to be better filters of all of what's out there.
Wikipedia is not the first answer.
No.
It's the one that pops up first when you do a Google search.
No, it's usually second, though.
I tell students, I'm like, it's not a bad initial. You gotta verify it elsewhere, but it's not a bad first step.
It's the same as it used to be, yeah.
It is.
So I'll ask the question. On the subject of technology, do we have adequate technology? In other words, number of machines, the capability of machines? We've seen a number of school districts, you know, an iPad in every kitchen, and all that sort of thing. And my personal view is, is I think some of that's overkill. We've also had some parents stand up in some of our meetings, saying, we have too much technology. You know, get back to basics, or whatever that means for them. So, you know, do you feel that we have adequate? Using the word adequate on purpose, because we can't have everything.
We've got twenty-six sixth graders this year, twenty-five, twenty-six. And one of the things we ran into at the beginning of the year is that the laptop cart that we had wasn't adequate, because six or seven of those kids wouldn't have a computer. And so, it actually solved the problem with Chromebooks, which are far more economical. And so we got ten of those to put on the cart as well. Students have now started to pick those first, but it has allowed us to get all twenty-six kids onto the computer at the same time. And I feel that was the one thing that was our problem that's been solved.
I'd like to add, we may want to just think and reshape that, the way we think about adequate technologies. Because, you know, do we have enough graphing calculators for all the eighth graders? Well, if we let them take their phones out of their backpack, we do. The graphing calculator apps on this phone are way better than a graphing calculator. And so, I don't, I mean, as we move forward, most kids are gonna have a computer that's way more powerful than the ones we used ten years ago, right in their pocket. And how are we utilizing those? And I would, I would put that on the table as something to think about.
Taking videos, that's been the best.
Video camera and camera right in your pocket, everyone's got them now. Everyone's got them in eighth grade.
Sometimes we sneak the cell phone for a particular use, because they wanna, they wanna record their experiment.
But just the way we use things, you know?
I did have, when we met with the architects, and talking about hopes and dreams, and the question came up about the computer lab in the library. And I'm like, I love the computer lab in the library. It's a change of venue, it's a good place to come and like, do some focused learning, and all of that kinds of stuff. And one of the architects said, look, here's the deal. We got finite square footage here. And he said, we can do multiple things in that finite square footage, but we got finite square footage. And he said, is it important enough, you know, with laptops on the wing, to keep that? Because it's a fun change of venue, and it's something I've been thinking a lot about. And I, you know, as we think about technology, thinking about where we place the technology, and if some of those haven't been, like, those locations haven't been outdated, so.
You know, we haven't abandoned the paper word either. We have a great library, chock full with some incredible books. And our librarians that are so wonderful in finding just the right things. So, you know, and it's important that kids are exposed to all of that way of getting information. So, you know, we try to balance it. But there is some really cool stuff. Virtual labs, and things that we can't do in the classroom, that you can do in a virtual experience. So, we just bred rabbits the other day. For genetics, right?
And broke no health code laws.
Well, doesn't take that long.
And also, multiple times a year, I'll go down to Carrie and Ellen and say, look, this is the unit I'm thinking about doing. What do you got? And they will, most times, come back by the end of the day and say, all right, here's the stuff that we found. And it's great stuff. So that part of the library resource has been fantastic.
Couldn't do it without them.
But as far as technology goes, even just for me, separate from middle school, I mean, to email my daughter in third grade and get a response during her Part II class question is amazing. And to be presented with an argument for why I should get a jury for an outstanding score on particular grade. Fully researched with.
I hope she put on it evidence, that's all I have.
She had all this evidence, and it was good.
She realizes they're wrong, that's right.
My daughter would do that.
Well, but I think kids are, in their free time, they gravitate to their devices. Why take it away during their school time? That's what they love. They are drawn towards that. They're, in most cases, much more technical savvy than we are in a lot of things.
And we can use it to the advances, what's that?
It depends on whether or not it's on their Facebook page.
We do, with the students a lot, about, with advocacy, and you gotta advocate for yourself. And if you have questions, or you feel like something's unfair, you really need to talk to the teacher. And a lot of that communication, especially with sixth and seventh graders at this point, is with an email. You'll get an email in the evening saying, I'm so confused in class right now, I don't know what's going on. Or, I'm home right now, and I don't have any idea what you're asking with this question. Or, you know, if there's some social things going on in class, they'll share that via email. Often more readily than just coming to us, so.
Comfortable.
Yeah.
All right, thanks everyone.
Thank you very much for your support.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, guys. Hey, Chetza. Yeah.
So are we gonna get any kneecap presentations on three to five? Performance, or?
Those, three to eight. We don't have to remember if they wanted to.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to the principal's report.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
I think in light of the length of that, we'll be pretty quick with this. But a couple of things I'd highlight. If you haven't walked through, we've got a great new display up in the middle school, in the wing, kind of between where Symphony and Wynton are. It's, you might remember, we talked about wretches and jabberers. The presentation around autism and bullying and harassment. And some artwork that students created, a series of puzzle pieces have all been laid out there by Eric and Karen, along with the display of the piece of artwork Larry Disnet made and dedicated to the school.
It's beautiful, spectacular. Please stop by and walk that home, because it's really powerful. Just would highlight the work our music department's been doing lately. Part of it was a cabaret night, did that about a month ago, which was an evening of student performances. I think we had about two hundred members of the community there. And three hours of student musical presentation, singing, performances, kind of nonstop. It raised over four thousand dollars, that then they used to, just last month, the middle school wind ensemble went to Montreal for two days, and had the opportunity to perform in the Notre Dame Basilica, and do an exchange performances with two highs, a high school and a middle school up there. And then this past weekend, the chorus was in New York City, took part in a, in a, and I guess we'd call it a musical festival, pulling together a middle school chorus from Manhattan, another from the Bronx, culminating in a common performance, and tours around Ground Zero and downtown. I mean, just great stuff happening there. So, I get just really excited about the work that Kristen and Tim have been doing.
So one of our most exciting committees to be on for our school action planning is our wellness committee. And they do a spectacular job during May. We call it Movement May. And we get people out walking, obviously you see evidence of that in the community. Wednesday, we ask kids to walk to school, bike to school, just kind of motor to school on their, on their own. Their own body. And so, we also have teachers doing a whole variety of things. And our kneecap science test that we gave last week, before that, we did a Spark activity with Jen Niles, one of our classroom teachers, doing Zumba. And she led Zumba for fourth and eighth grade students. Alan and I participated as well. I'll show you the pictures of Alan later. But, anyway, it was, it was a really fun event. And so, we do a lot of movement in May.
And end of your schedule, we are one month away, Dave, right? One month from today. Debut graduation speech.
Woo, all right.
June thirteenth, we're looking forward to that, all right?
It's only a month.
Lot of end of year stuff coming up. And, yeah. And then we just, on the backside, I don't know if you'd like us to go through them individually, but we kind of gave you a rundown of some great folks who have either pursued other opportunities or that next phase of life in retirees. Relatively busy hiring season.
Yeah.
So, pretty about every day.
Yeah.
But we do have John's letter, right? I'm not sure what the protocol is in terms of.
John Strazza.
John Strazza. Can we read that at this point, or later, or?
Well, we just mentioned it, and I've speculated that letter to the board, so they all know.
So do you want us to just read the names of folks?
For the public record, yeah, folks that are, so our retirees, we have Georgine Grover, our planning room director, Vicky Weideman, our elementary counselor, and Lois Lynch, who's been a long-term parent at the middle school.
And then our resignations, we have Jennifer Lawson, who's been teaching sixth, seventh, eighth grade on the, as a social studies teacher on the Wynton team this year. Patrick Holliday, as you may have heard, is resigning from the Discover team. And he's been there for about five years, I guess. Kristen Bamberger, who is our middle school music teacher and choral teacher, has been with us for a few years. She'll be leaving to pursue other things. Patrick Smith has been with us a few years as a special educator, and he'll be leaving us this year. And Gretchen Garrity did, actually, she's been gone for a little bit, but she was on the Alpha Team. So we wish them well in their future pursuits.
You can see our enrollment, and we added a kindergartner today. So that would actually be seventy-nine.
Seventy-sixty-nine.
Just keeps growing.
That's for next year.
That's for next year, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, you meant seventy-nine for next year.
We found another one.
Nice. Can we get up to eighty, please?
We'll be there.
So first, I want to thank everyone who has worked for us and is retiring or leaving. And thank everyone for their service. The second thing I wanted to say was, I saw one contract that there was reopening the employment contract for kindergartner. Don't we need one more teacher for first grade? Are we gonna move folks around to get that, or are we hiring?
We're hiring right now. We're actually interviewing right now for a first grade teacher and for a fourth grade teacher.
Okay.
Well, yeah, fifth grade teacher for next year. Patrick Holliday's replacement.
Okay. Good. Okay. Great. Let's get back to what happened in my agenda here. So that's the principal's report, and next is.
CSSU debrief.
Yep, so. Let's see here. So, what do we, so the things we spoke about were, we approved going to ADM for student services. We discussed kneecap assessments as the common topic. Any other big hitters from that?
A lot of the things that are on the CSSU we're also discussing tonight.
Yeah.
Legislative update. Hundred dollars per each new teacher.
Thousand.
I mean, sorry, thousand dollars per each new teacher, which is gonna be effective in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, is that correct?
And that's just gonna go to retirement, to fund retirements? To fund retiree healthcare, which, if you've paid any attention to David Coats for the last couple of years, he's been going around the state saying that, you know, essentially the state's been looting the pension fund to pay for the retiree healthcare with no dedicated funding source. So this is the state government solution. And we pay the freight on that. Essentially, it's just, yeah, I mean, it's raised the cost of each teacher, each new teacher we hire by a grand.
Right.
So it's a one-time?
I think it's an ongoing. I think that it's an every-year kind of deal. Now, I don't know if that's forever, or if that's just to get funds back to some point, where from an actuarial standpoint, they'll look at and say, okay, fine, we're fully funded now. I don't know. So if we have seventy teachers, that's seventy thousand dollars a year? Well, it's only as you hire new ones. So if, you know, if, for the following fiscal year, we hire ten new teachers, then we're looking at ten grand. And the next year, if we hire five more, if I understand it correctly, then we're up to fifteen grand. So it sort of eases into it. But yes, at some point, for the people who are eligible for that program, you're gonna, you know, at some point, when everybody retires, you're gonna have a grand for every one of them. But, you know, that's, of course, until they change it again. But that's kind of, I guess, the theory of how it's all supposed to lay out. You know, I mean, it's a, it is a big problem. I don't know whether, I don't have a judgment on whether or not this is the best solution or not, but it is a big problem. Better to try to solve it now, rather than have it, there's an overhang, ten years from now. Yeah.
Okay.
Talked about the fact that there is now universal pre-K, but that's not, nothing new for us, right? And there was a positive two cents increase with, for non-homestead, and a negative one cent increase in the, for the tax rate, right? Wasn't that it?
Yeah.
For the homestead, those people who qualify for the Homestead Act. I think that was, other than.
Yeah, sounds right.
That's it? That's the new stuff?
The financial management report, read through that. Balance still looks the same as it was previously. Part two?
So this is a report from Jeff O'Hara, who is the overall director of the program. And I guess, without really doing the kind of thing, what I'd highlight is, pretty significantly, we started the year expecting that this would generate funding for us, and they are planning to meet their target, that they will be writing us a check for forty thousand dollars to rent the building to run Part II. So, that's a substantial difference from what we've had in the past, yeah? Enrollment, we're at ninety, exceeding our expectations there. And I think more importantly, the promise we made to those families that are involved in LiveWires was the quality would remain the same. Not just that we'd take all comers, but we would create programs that were at least comparable, if not better. And the feedback seems to be, we've met that target as well. Lots of other pieces in there. There's just some really neat stuff happening, and we're rolling out a summer program, which if you've seen it, and there are about, between Heinsberg and Shelburne, about twenty-five day camp options for students through the Part II program. It's fantastic what's coming together.
And I do just want to highlight the, one of the bullets there, where it says, a successful integration of enrichment classes during the Part II program, some of which include, and those programs had been offered, some of them, at our school previously. But now, you'll see that Part II students attend these courses for free or at a discounted rate on school grounds, which really is, you know, just ensuring that all kids have access to those really high-quality programs. So I think that that's really a bonus.
I think especially emphasizing that it's K-five students.
Oh, exactly, sorry.
We've had a really robust enrichment program for six, eight. This is developing something for our K-five, which is something the community's really been asking for. Kind of what are the after-school opportunities that are available for our young people, so. What are the after-school opportunities that are available for young people, so.
Are there a lot of the lower SES families taking advantage of that?
Yes.
Our, so, so what are we expecting for next year? I mean, we, we obviously have ninety kids in it, which I think we have been capped at fifty in the previous program. So, do we expect, or, you know, do, do you have a capacity constraint at some point? If, if a hundred and twenty next year.
Capacity limited, limited only by our creativity, in terms of, you know, I think our commitment mutually is, you know what, if we see this building being used till six o'clock every night, rather than closing the doors at three o'clock, we'd like to see that happen. I think it's also opening some creative conversations with our architects, because this is the vision of where we want to go. And right now, even the building itself provides some limitations on supervision and capacity and the flexibility of our spaces. Right now, we, we're taking every person who wants to. We have not turned anybody away, and we don't see starting to turn anybody away. We just kind of keep adding staff. So, Jeff's predicting we're going to stay at about a hundred for a while now. That's, we're, we're not seeing a tremendous.
We can expand.
No, that's great. Well, as you said, the big thing is, is that we, you know, haven't turned away anybody, which had been a problem.
Um, the tuition, is it about what it was in LiveWires, or is it more or less, or what is it?
No, it's less.
It's less? Kudos.
Much less.
Happy customer.
Actually had to scramble around to find extra expenses through the summer in order to meet my five thousand dollar IRS.
That's just a recommendation, Dave.
Pardon?
I was gonna say, why isn't that in the?
I was able to, I was able to expense my daughter's violin lessons because.
That's great news.
Yeah, it is. Good bang for the buck.
And more accessible.
Yeah. And the kids love it. I mean, they really love it. They really do.
I think it's, you know, based on, you know, it's springtime, kids are crazy. They're getting outside for the first time. I think the numbers they're at right now are right at the right spot. You know, a couple of kids are involved in some stuff where, just on the edges of supervision, and they got in trouble. Nothing bad, no one was hurt. Only money was exchanged. So, you know, that's good, but I would be wary of going too much bigger than what it is right now.
Without additional.
Without a redefinition of the model and the structure.
I agree with you.
Yeah. Awesome. So, part two, facilities committee, the recurring theme.
Yes, well.
Over and over and over.
Yeah, but it's great. We are making huge strides with the facilities committee. We're meeting every other week. We have another, uh, person who has joined the committee, Ellen Matthews, um, who is on staff. And this past week, we got a report from Doran Whittier on their building and site assessment. And they gave a presentation to the community on that last night. And we had really a packed room for that. We were really pleased. And very enthusiastic community members who even said they would like to form a subcommittee to do marketing about this for us. I mean, it's ju, it was, I, I was so pleased. It was like a firestorm. It was, it was great. Doran Whittier had done a series of what they called squatter sessions with, throughout the school, with teachers and staff and kids to find out what their wants and needs were. So, they're putting that all together. Their next phase is what they call the educational programming, or what we would like to see happen educationally in the building, not just, uh, bricks and mortar, you know. And then, we're going to keep going through the summer with our meetings on this. And we probably will continue to have community involvement through the summer, too. They were interested in that. So, we, I think we might be moving towards, um, the possibility of, uh, a bond vote in, in November. At least, we're moving in that direction with that schedule. We'll see. We'll see where we are with that.
With a more substantive update to come at the retreat. It's not a retreat. That's where we really want to be.
Their, their recommendation is to do it in November, Doran Whittier, as opposed to at budget time?
Because they have found that it's effective because it's separate. But their, their plus and minus is on both sides.
Does this plan envision, uh, greater use of CCTV cameras and, you know, sort of, uh, video cameras for security purposes, for whatever reason?
We have not heard that yet.
I'm just wondering, I mean, this might be the time to do it, you know, for wiring and all that. But it also might enable greater, you know, security surveillance, uh, you know.
So far, they, so far, they've presented to us what they have observed. They haven't presented any options to us yet. So, I don't know what they're going to do with that. Yeah.
But it does include, uh, fire alarm replacement.
It was in there.
Did you hear what happened on Tuesday afternoon? At, as, at two fifty, when school let out? The fire alarms went off, and they got stuck. And they continued to go off. So, there was controlled pandemonium. Fired beautifully. Yeah, well, you know, that's what it was.
Everyone was safe. Everyone was safe.
Did a beautiful job.
Beautiful job. Students had actually loaded the bus. I just have to say, for the camera, student had loaded, students had loaded onto the buses, and they were about halfway full. And those kiddos stayed on the buses for thirty minutes, I would say. And they were so well-behaved. It was amazing. As were all the other students, too. But I mean, when you're on a bus for thirty minutes, not going anywhere, not knowing really what you're doing, you know?
Well, nobody really knew what.
Well, that's what I mean. It wasn't for lack of trying to figure it out.
Clearly not planned.
The situation we'll be analyzing and, uh, developing a few more procedures for.
The one, the one, uh, I mean, this isn't appropriate for this point in the agenda, but the one bit of advice I got from my daughter is that she didn't know what to do when she wasn't with her class.
Well, that's it. Nobody was with their class. So, it was totally different.
So, is the bus driver in charge?
Well, she's not on the bus.
She's not on a bus.
Kids come out of school, get picked up, or walk home, or.
It was literally right.
It was exactly at that moment of release. Literally, we were, in as unstructured of a part of our day, seven hundred and eighty kids who were sort of on your own, but sort of not.
Right.
So, some were going to part-two, some were going to the bus, some were trying to meet their parents, some were.
That's interesting. There's no model for that.
Did the fire trucks, Tom?
Yes.
Fire trucks came.
They tried to come. They couldn't find parking, we know that. Well, people were pretty good. They moved out of the way. Yep.
It really was.
Right.
It was handled beautifully.
Is that it for facilities?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay. Well, could we get, those of us that weren't there, could we get Doran Whittier's presentation by chance?
I, I don't have a copy of it, but, um, I think.
Posted on the website.
I think the point was that we're gonna post it on the website on other places.
Make sure it's posted a link to you, so you know it's there.
You can friend the Facebook page, Dave.
Yep.
Developing a Facebook page for the facilities.
There isn't an SES Facebook page.
Well, there's also, uh, there'll be a link on the website also.
Okay. All right. So, we move on to discussion matters. First item, input on carousel meeting schedule. Now, this came up in our, in one of the meetings in the past few months, and it centers around the activity with respect to VSBA, Mont School Board Association, and their ability to have influence on things like H eight-eight-three that reluctantly died in committee on Saturday. But VSBA is a, you know, has a board that meets on this evening, the second Wednesday of every month. And Elaine proposed, you know, is there any interest in moving our dates for this meeting so that we could, we could have people attend those meetings? Be part of the board or just be in the audience. So, this is not necessarily a comment on whether or not you want to do, be part of the VSBA or influence education law at the House and Senate level. But she wanted us to take a vote and count. If you would like.
Straw poll.
A straw poll, a straw poll of, and I would let her know, um, what dates you would prefer to change the meeting to if we did. And if it comes out that more people would want to have the meeting on the third Wednesday versus the second Wednesday, we could do that.
Well, I, I, I think it was less a question of want as opposed to, what, what Elaine's voice concern about was, is, is there anybody here who cannot meet because of some other, they're on some other board that always meets on the second Tuesday? Or, you know, the, the four dates offered, these four dates were all dates that, uh, Central Office felt that they, you know, were workable for them, given everything else that, that, you know, goes on, and I think probably for the, for the building principals also. So, you know, it's a question of, would any of these dates not, absolutely not work for anybody if the, you know, if we all voted to have our carousel meetings next school year be on, on a different date so that we could then have people going and attending these meetings? So, it's not, you know, do you want to change, it's. Yeah, you know, did you run for this knowing, okay, good, it's always on the second Wednesday of the month, and I can make that, but I can never make Tuesdays. So, so then, you know, then we've sort of disenfranchised people who were elected to that.
So, I know that first option, second Tuesday, is hard for three of us because that's PTO. So, I mean, we wouldn't want it on the second Tuesday.
Third Wednesday is out for me.
Okay. So, that leaves.
The second Wednesday's what it is, is the third Tuesday.
Right. Thursday's.
Third Tuesday's fine with me.
Me, too.
Me, too.
Any of them's fine for me.
It would be PTO amazing if you had to.
Okay, that's great.
Awesome. It's not the second Tuesday, because it's, it's engulfing. Correct?
Good point, Dave.
Yeah. So, retreats. So, Renee, where did I get that from? Elaine, Elaine put in a, uh, a rough outline for our retreats on the thirtieth. Our retreat is in the morning. And Tim and Bob are welcome to attend in the afternoon for the CSSU retreat as well. I know that we had, in that two-hour session in the morning, there are topics that we can choose to discuss. I can't find that thing right now.
Do you want a copy of that, Dave?
It's not in our SES.
It's in this under six point two.
Long Meadow Properties, the solar project, and middle-level structure.
Okay, I never saw that in our copy.
It's on the website.
Right, right, okay. But not the specifics that you were just talking about.
So, as you said, is it Long Meadow?
Elaine wants you to both consider that these are what she has heard over time would come up at the retreat, and then she's not looking for you to add five things, because it means each of them gets less time for discussion. But just if there's something else that's pressing, this is the right time to add it. So, facilities is one, number of anticipated and current projects, timeline to accomplish, funding sources, that kind of stuff. So, facilities in general, Long Meadow Property slash the solar project.
That's something that Dave Kelly has been talking about, and so, it's the piece of property we own out Route Seven. And we've been investigating whether or not we could develop a solar project, a solar array there that would have pretty tremendous financial benefit to the school. But there's some legal implications with the deed that we thought, and Dave and I talked before, that'd be a good time to kind of put it on the table and see if that's something you would like administration to pursue or interested in.
So, I think since the board really isn't up to date on it, it would need a complete kind of presentation and then discussion.
We should discuss it at the retreat.
We certainly can bring the material.
Yeah, at that time, at the retreat.
So, we'll bring, we'll bring the background, and we'll come prepared to talk about it.
I suggested an RV park a few years ago.
It's a, it's a, it's a wetland, though. We gotta protect it.
And then the last topic that she's aware of, that's, you know, these are topics that evolved through conversation at board chairs and through various, um, results of note-taking at your meetings here, but middle-level structure was another.
Yep, and that was a follow-up question, just, I, I think you know we've had team membership changes at middle school. I know a number of you had some phone calls. I know a few had at least one phone call that I know of. Do you want more discussion around that, or?
I don't.
I'm fine. Comfortable with it, the way it is.
We don't want to have a conversation about that? We're fine?
I am.
You're good?
Well, I mean, I'm fine with the, that, but I think maybe kind of a discussion around process, just so we know we've got a hotbed activity coming that we have a little advance notice of we're gonna get on the call list.
Yeah. And I think that, like, that's something you and I talked about, and it's more like making sure the board has common talking points before something like this happens, so that.
Good idea.
Things can get stopped with the first phone call.
Predict what those things are that will cause.
We can keep trying.
Yeah, yeah. Just, you know, just to know, that's all. You know, 'cause, um, I mean, I, I don't appreciate it when committee members, community members call my wife, and then, then my wife's era. So, uh, you know, unknown.
To tell her that's the lot of a political spouse.
Just have Alan have you heard your wife in on the talking point. Dave's not here, but if he were here.
I told her, you know, you know, at least I'm not Elliot Spitzer, so.
Is this still on the list for the retreat, or did you just cover it?
I mean, we'll have a, we might, I mean, we should have a short conversation about.
Sure.
Mine as well.
Communication and talking points, that type of thing. However, we want to word that, so.
Is there any other burning topic that you think the retreat is the right forum for?
Do you and Patty and Ellen have anything?
We were, we were part of generating that list.
That list, okay.
All right. Any volunteers for board corners this week? Have anything left to discuss?
I was gonna say.
Had a nice big one on facilities.
Thank you, yep.
Could try out that graduation speech or that.
No, no, that's.
Are we gonna keep it under wraps?
Keep it under wraps. Nothing?
Nothing I can think of till the fall.
All right. Action Matters, uh, seven-one is, uh, school calendar? Which is in there. There was, was the, there was one mistake in there.
And I have a fresh copy of the K-eight, just had one very small mistake. It had the day saved in January, on January second, as a non-student day, but it didn't also say underneath the calendar that, uh, that it's a professional development day for our professional staff. So, this is the, the new improved model.
So, the one on the agenda is updated?
I think that's updated, yeah.
It is updated, okay.
This is updated.
We were, are just handed the updated one.
I think it's, I think it's online already.
Is it?
No, this.
No, this, this one.
One-two.
I've gotten a copy of this. I don't know where I got it, but.
It should be professional development.
It should be professional development day is corrected for January second.
Oh, I'm sure, okay.
Right, yeah.
It's just that, that line, right there.
So, it just said no school.
The nine-twelve calendar is five as is.
Great, thanks.
I was looking at the blue and the white.
Waiting anxiously for this, and I wanna make sure they get the right copy.
So, that's the right copy.
They have to vote on it right now, but it has to be.
But in terms of a digital copy, that'll, 'cause they'll go to the agenda too.
Okay. So could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
The twenty-fourth team calendar, second.
That was Tuesday last week.
Aye.
Tim.
Tim, Russ.
Russ and I had already voted on it when you guys were talking.
Miss Word.
Aye.
Aye. No, no name.
Is there any discussion?
No.
No, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, um, authorize signature authority for summer action. I'm okay with that, it's geographically appropriate. Um, anybody, everyone, have any other options?
So I'd make a motion that we authorize Dave to sign off for things, uh, for the board that would then get formal approval in September.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right, um, consent agenda? I forget, do we, do we make a motion to approve it?
Technically, what we, um, should do is ask, and, and actually, when we did adjustments to agenda, should, you know, is there anybody who wants to pull anything out of the consent agenda that we would then vote and discuss? Otherwise, there's no discussion on it, it's just a, a motion and a.
Well, I, I have a, I have a correction, a few corrections to the, it, the April nine meeting agenda, or minutes. These are minutes, right?
Oh, yes.
The min- the minutes are, I, I'm not shown as present, and Russ is shown as chair, I think. Dave, that was your first.
Yes.
We were chairing that meeting.
Chairing that meeting.
Actually, it was the second, his first one was in March.
That's right.
Which I, which I was not there for.
Okay.
And then also, it says that there were parents present, and it said many teachers and parents were present. I don't think there were any parents present, it was just, just teachers.
I, I think some of the, well, there were some teachers and paras.
There were non-teachers there. There was a non-teacher there.
But there was a spouse.
A spouse of a teacher, right, but no parents.
But he was, he was a parent.
Well, the, the, some of the paras are parents as well.
I think they were there in their capacity as a para, though, not as a parent.
Right.
I mean, I, I, I don't know, it, it's, it's not really material, but, you know. It, it should probably be correct in the record.
Do you wanna say staff and community members? Could that be more representative?
Just say staff, they're, they're a staff. Yeah, it's really staff.
And, and I think they were there under the union's, um, contractual right to discuss.
That's right.
You know, whatever register their, uh, their viewpoint.
But if we just write and parents, that's, that, that.
Kind of overstated what.
Should be sufficient.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So can we, could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda with those, I would say, minor changes to the, adjustments to the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? No? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, uh, next dates, uh, our retreat. Next, or Friday after Memorial Day, the thirtieth, issue one. C S S U board in the afternoon and, I'm on a streak, I've been to one board chair meeting in a row. So, I'll try to remember my meeting on the twentieth. And that's it? Do we wanna go into the executive session to discuss negotiations?
Um, I think there is one part of it, and I don't, that, that, yes, I think does warrant discussion about the negotiations. We could also do it, um, at the retreat if that were, you know, it's not, it's not critical that we do it tonight. It, I think it's something, though, that we, what, what, as the representative to the committee, that I would like to have some further discussion and better understand where our board stands on a few things.
Good idea.
So, like I say, that can be at the retreat, it doesn't have to be here.
Well, from a timing standpoint, it'd be, it might be better if we did it tonight for just two minutes, because of a question I have.
Well, except that we're not going to get anything, the, the Fact Finders report doesn't come until June fifteenth. So, I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm fine if, if you, if, if you want to, if you think we do need to, but the Fact Finders report doesn't come until June fifteenth, so I'm not sure.
Well, if you and I can just have the conversation, we can just, if, you know, as we're walking out to the car, we don't have to belabor, it doesn't have to be an executive session.
No, I guess maybe we should go ahead then and have the executive session so that, yeah, we're not accused of any, even if it's only two of us and not a quorum.
Yeah. So, one thing, before we go into executive session, I just was reminded, we have the twenty-fifth of June business meeting as well. So, could I get a motion to go into executive session?
For the purposes of discussing and negotiating.
For the purpose of discussing negotiations?
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
Okay, and, uh, we will go into executive session and adjourn from there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good.